Before we get started, let's introduce ourselves, starting to my left.
Sherwin Douglas, Commissioner.
Ann Barra?
Oops, sorry.
Sorry. Ann Barra?
Tim Twain, Director of Community Development.
Ann Bieke.
Eric Klooster. Doug Hedges, City Planner.
Ann Markless, City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, we have a quorum. Our next item is the approval of minutes for November 12th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Douglas. Is there support? Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on these minutes? We're not seeing all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next item is the public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anybody here that would wish to speak to the planning commission on a non-agenda item? Okay, not seeing any hands, we'll close item C. And we're gonna go to new business. This is a site plan, 191223, to pave off-street parking lot for the religious institution, Mitchum Chapel AME Church at 4207 West 14 Mile Road. Mr. Twain.
This site is zoned multifamily residential. It is an existing church, religious institution. As we indicated in report, those uses are considered as special land use in multifamily. Given that it exists and the proposed improvements are not considered an enhancement or an enlargement of the intensity of the use, we've simply listed it as a site plan approval. The petitioner is proposing to take what is primarily a gravel parking surface and convert it into a hard-surface parking lot with some 19 regular spaces and I believe one handicap space for a total of 20. That would bring it, the site, more into compliance under the zoning ordinance for having a hard surface and the appropriate number of parking spots. Terms of the conditions, conditions recommended on the site plan, they are listed there, 1 through 7. Primarily, the first one is related to landscaping and screening that would be proposed or provided around the parking area. Petitioners primarily proposing to leave the existing privacy fence. If the planning commission chose to require additional landscaping or screening, we would ask that you identify that as part of your review this evening. Secondly, as part of the landscape plan, staff's recommending they provide a survey that indicates the number of existing trees that will be removed. Under the zoning ordinance, they would be required to replace those onsite, basically two to one. So we're looking potentially for a landscape and screening plan based on your review this evening. Number 2 is in regards to the number of parking spots and the seating capacity of the church. 3, 4, 5, and 6 are standard contingencies regarding engineering plans, lighting, fixtures, signage, performance bonds, et cetera.
Mr. Twain? Any questions for Mr. Twain? Ms. Bieke?
Can you comment at all on the condition of the current screening, the fence, et cetera? Or maybe the petitioner can do that when they speak?
Well, they provided some pictures of the screening in the packet. Looking at Google Earth, you can see those as well. Google Maps.
Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Twain? Okay, is the petitioner here?
Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Alan Crust with Monument Engineering. This is Reverend Boyd. And Gary, or Gary Cummins.
Gary Cummins.
Welcome. Is there anything you'd like to add or discuss with us?
I think Mr. Twain summed up everything up pretty well. We are in the process of preparing a landscaping plan for our submittal to, you know, increase the screening along the edges. We do want to maintain what is there but just enhance it. We're trying to save as many of the existing trees as possible. We, to the, I guess the standard items, we're not proposing any new signage, nor are we proposing any new lighting on the property, and nor are we proposing any work in the public right-of-way at this point. We're happy to answer any questions regarding the plans or the function of the church.
Thank you. Ms. Bieke?
As far as what you're gonna put down on the surface, you may be aware that there's a, we have some new stormwater fees that are gonna be put in place based on permeable versus non-permeable surfaces, and I'm just wondering if maybe you're gonna use a permeable surface on the parking lot or what it's gonna be? In terms of, it might help you in cost in the long run.
Understood. At this point, we're not proposing a permeable pavement.
So it'd be standard?
Yes, yes, just standard as well.
Any other questions for the petitioners? Ms. Douglas?
So while we're waiting for an official tree survey, it kinda looks like there are two trees there. Is that pretty much correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, and you anticipate having to remove those?
No, we're gonna keep those trees.
Okay.
We do have, well, it may be a little hard to see through some of the demolition notes, but we do have trees located and we can clean that up for the, for staff review.
And you, that's your fence, right?
Yes.
The screening fence is?
The south and the west property line, a privacy fence that exists.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Klooster?
Can you, since we don't have full engineering drawings, can you speak to the intent with the stormwater management with the new improved surface?
We're looking to sheet flow that to 14 Mile and not sheet flow onto our neighbors.
Okay. What is the purpose of paving?
Well, during the, during the wintertime and during the rainy season, that's just gravel and mud, and so people are slipping on that and coming in and their shoes are really messed up, and it's an improvement to the church that we think would enhance the worship experience and make the church more appealing to people and comfortable for our congregation.
Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion? Mayor?
Moved.
Motion moved to?
Approve the plan. Sorry, I'm having a hard time with my, I'm coming in from the cold, yes.
Motion by the mayor to move the plan forward, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Bieke. Is there any discussions on this motion?
So, the assumption here is that we will leave it to staff to determine if their landscaping plan is acceptable?
Basically, yes, because we're, if they're gonna keep, our biggest concern was are the trees staying or being removed? And there's not enough detail there to tell for sure the impact on it. So if they're keeping the trees and you're satisfied with what's there and the screening, that was our biggest question.
Okay, good, thank you.
I just add, I think we got their word, the trees are gonna be there. And it makes sense, I mean, it's in your own motivation to have some nice mature trees on the property. And so, I have no opinion about landscaping that much, so, but I think you guys will meet the regs and it's glad to, I know I've been there and have parked in that lot before and it was a little surprising the first time, I was like, oh, wow, okay. So this'll be an improvement.
Any other discussion? Not seeing all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Okay, our next item is another site plan. This is SP 181230. That's a revised site plan to construct six-story multifamily building with 69 dwelling units and height of 74 feet at 222 East 6th Street and 609 611 South Williams Street. Mr. Twain?
This project was in front of you previously, as we've indicated in the staff report. Initially, it proposed some 78 dwelling units and 108 parking spaces. That was revised at the planning commission's direction. It was eventually reduced to 70 dwelling units and 105 parking spaces. The overall height of the building at that time was 63 feet 5 inches, still had six levels. The petitioner, as you indicated in the overview, is proposing to do a couple of things to modify that, modify that previously approved plan. They are proposing to raise the height of the building to 74 feet versus, again, what I indicated previously with 63 and 1/2. They are eliminating one dwelling unit going from 70 to 69. It appears that that's primarily in order to expand a fitness center area for the residents. They are maintaining 105 parking spaces in the proposal. They are, the other item they're proposing to revise is the location of the swimming pool, which was previously up on the roof area. They're proposing to move that down to the terrace area, if you recall the layout of the site. The question we would have there is if the planning commission is comfortable with the screening that was, is proposed based on your concern last time, is this a buts-up to another residential development to the east in that area? Basically, they're showing a ramp, screening wall, some landscaping in the pool hot-tub area on the terrace. Another item that we've pointed out in the report on levels 4 and 5, there are some windows proposed on the elevation, along the south elevation, that are on the property line. We're pointing that out simply because it's unlikely those will get past building code review to have openings on the property line. If the planning commission is considering approval, the contingencies we have listed are your approval of the additional height to 74 feet, either accepting the proposed screening on the terrace on that level or modifying it as part of your review. And, let's see what else is in here. Basically, some of the same provisions that were previously approved as part of the prior plans, maintaining all those other contingencies. And then standard contingencies, again, for the right-of-way work and signage.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. Any questions? Ms. Douglas?
The, the windows on the south facade, so are those not overlooking the terrace but on the more westerly part of the south facade?
They're on the, as I said, the 4th and 5th level. If I get up there a sec, they're below the terrace, or below the roof patio.
No, I mean, I read your, I looked at the plans and I read what you said and I wasn't sure what the, what they're doing, what the change was.
It's these win, if you look at the screen, it's these windows here.
Have been added.
Yeah, those, those were added along that south wall. Those are all appear to be on the property line, provide additional units there, but building code, they generally don't allow openings on a property line. It would more look like this. They're above the condominium project to the south.
Oh, okay, all right, now I, now I visualize it, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Twain? Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, my name is Andy Millia, President Franklin Property Corporation. We're the development consultants for the developer, developers Anthony Randazzo, his son Anthony Randazzo Jr. They're both here this evening to answer any additional questions. I believe Tim did an excellent job kinda summarizing the request. It's necessitated out of the fact we wanna raise the building height a few feet due to some safety and some design elevation issues. When we did additional engineering on the property, we were really in, deep into the groundwater, which is at 8 feet and we're set 10 feet below grade. The goal is to raise that, raise the bottom of the parking above the permanent groundwater level, so that necessitated raising the building, also making some improvements to the parking, make that height a little bit higher for a ramp to go up, as well as to add some additional height to the floors to make those more marketable. So it's the same building in terms of overall elevation design, actually one less unit, the same amount of parking. The building, as you'll notice in the package, is still significantly lower than some of the other surrounding buildings in the area. I think you did an excellent job of highlighting in the potential approval conditions. We're agreeable to all the conditions outlined, including removal of the windows on the south property line if that's necessary. Again, both Randazos are here to answer any technical questions as it relates that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Ms. Bieke?
I guess the only question I have is thinking about the pool, and again, because it's a residential area and that, can you explain again the screening in a little bit of detail and also if it has some sound absorbency features? Just to get, you say it's supposed to be serene, but we know that people sometimes are not serene, so kinda talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so the pool is now located on the second floor area and it's designed to have landscape screening to the property owners adjacent to it. Be potted, you know, trees and plants and screening, so it'll have a visual screening and that'll help the sound screening as well.
As far as I know, sound screening isn't not addressed with, the landscaping helps visually more so, but.
Well, the trees, by the way, this is Anthony Randazzo.
Thank you for asking that question. My name's Anthony Randazzo. In addition to the, is there a picture of that up there that can show the?
He's showing me now, yeah.
Okay, we also have a fence behind it. So not only will you have this sound absorption of, you know, the trees, which are minimal, but you'll also have a fence. And then we also have a, an area between that and the neighbors. So as you know, the only way to eliminate sound is either by space or density, we have both.
And the fence is gonna be made of what?
More than likely, it'll be some sort of dense wood or acrylic material.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Klooster?
The screening right now I'm seeing is only on the east side of the terrace, correct? There's none proposed for the south side of that terrace?
There's a parking lot, yeah, there's a parking lot for the co-op behind there. And we're more than likely, well, that'd be obviously the south side, right? So we'd like to get the sun in there. In addition to that thought, so, you know, we'd have some pots along that, but it's gonna be substantially above that parking lot. Another consideration was, you don't wanna have a pool over a parking structure as opposed to residence for safety's sake. So we consulted our pool consultant, he said they all leak, so we thought it would be best to have it over concrete. We took his advice, that was one of the main concerns, but thanks for pointing that out.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Not seeing, is there a motion? Ms. Douglas?
I will say I am not wild about the additional height here. I think we already granted them some slack in our first approval. The nearby Barton Towers, or I'm sorry, Royal, sorry, Royal Manor, notwithstanding the other taller buildings that we have been cited are in downtown, which is where you want tall buildings. So I'm not inclined to grant them the height variance. I don't have, actually, I don't have a problem with the windows on the, the property line on the south facade. The pool is fine, but I just think we're, I'm not crazy about the additional height of the building, and I, the solution might be to take a story off this. So I'll, I'll try this and I'll see what my fellow commissioners feel on the subject, but I'm inclined to grant the petitioner's proposal with the exception of item 1. And limit them to their original height, which was what, 68, Mr. Twain?
63 and 1/2 feet, I believe it was.
Okay. And if that 63 and 1/2 feet means you have to take off more than one story of the building, then, you know, I'll consider a height that allows them to keep that whatever, 5th story, but I'm just not ready to go that high here.
Is there support on that motion to remove item 1?
Support.
Okay, there's motion's been made to remove item 1?
Well, actually, to revise item 1 to make the maximum building height 63, whatever Mr. Twain said, 63 something, or whatever enables them to have, 1, 2, 3, 4, is it currently five stories of?
Five stories and then there's that recessed kind of house.
May, may we address the planning commission, is it would be appropriate?
We do have a motion on, on the table, so we're in the middle of a motion.
Okay.
So there's been support by Mr. Klooster, so there's the discussion on that motion. Ms. Bieke?
I guess, my, looking at the rendering and seeing that it is a setback top floor, I'm wondering why they had added it and also, I'm assuming basically on this rendering, you're not gonna see it much, and actually, as it looks to me, it looks, makes the building look more contemporary, not that that's necessarily a criteria. And so I guess I'd like to hear why it was added and what the difference is.
Yeah, I'm on the same, same page, because while I agree in general with height, I think that you're balancing a couple of things here with the setback, especially there on the south side, which you're gonna affect, I mean, we have a fire station on the one side, not an issue, but on the south side there, you have a significant, I mean, even from here, from the ground view, assuming that all the dimensions on this drawing are accurate, you really can't see that issue anyway, you can't see the height fully. And I agree with Ms. Bieke that, you know, it does add some architectural flair to it and kinda makes it, you know, stand out a little bit, just like the building next to it has sort of the unique patio, you can see the different colors, it's kinda for its time a little bit more contemporary. It adds some, some flavor, or not some flavor, but some character to it. So for me, in general, like if this was just a square box, I'd have an issue granting it, but I think given the fact that it's tiered back, especially on the south side, where we would have concerns, I can't, I'm not sure that I really wanna support the motion. I don't know what the proper parliamentary procedure is, but it would be interesting to hear from the petitioner.
I was thinking the same thing about Robert's Rules, I don't have my book in front of me. Doug, can you help or?
Yeah, if they, you wish to.
During discussion?
Yeah, you can.
I break it all the time at the commission meeting.
It's your privilege. You're the mayor, the chairman's privilege.
If you want.
I don't know, that's in Robert's Rules, isn't it?
No, there's nothing preventing me from addressing you again, if you want.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and we understand that the issues are raised. What I think is important to understand is, we're not adding density, we're not adding units to it, we're not adding height for height's sake, we're adding height for practical safety concerns and design features. So the first one is, is bringing it further out of the grade to avoid groundwater issues, which is a safety and a design and an engineering issue. We're also adding some height to the garage because of the ramp issue, so that's making a better product because of it. And then there's a slight height increase on each floor to make a more modern contemporary apartment unit to be competitive with, you know, what's, what's popular in Royal Oak. So we're not adding mass height to create more units, you know, we're not coming in and adding density, we're just improving the previously approved project. And it, it does fit within the, the character of the neighborhood, it does fit in with the character, it's much lower than some of the adjacent buildings. So I think Ms. Douglas raises an excellent point, you know, we're not in favor of just adding density, but we are in favor of improving the product from a visual standpoint, from a marketability standpoint, and from a safety standpoint, so we'd ask that you consider that.
The other consideration, Commissioner, if you're concerned about the height, we would be willing to concede to have some taller trees in the front, get them as tall as we can, which is attractive and kind of will minimize the look in terms of the height. But the, kinda in keeping with, some of the logic was, we didn't have, at the time of our original approval, we didn't have the appropriate water tables because they vary sometimes. And they're instituting a new stormwater tax, which, you know, we're in favor of improving the storm.
Not a tax.
Excuse me.
It's okay.
Improvement.
It's a fee. It's a fee.
So by keeping out of it, we're not, we're not pumping water in the system, because obviously you'd have a massive sub-pump, you know, constantly pushing it through by, by keeping it lower, which we could achieve what we want, but we would have to go lower. It would not be beneficial to the storm system at all, and certainly not to, it's, it's just not structurally a sound way to do it. But we would put taller trees. In addition to, that we didn't bring up, the patio, at the time, we had one of the units that was kinda facing the other property next door, we eliminated it. So we don't have that anymore. And then we additionally, we put those screening trees on the side to stop any potential noise, we're sensitive to these neighbors. I've actually visited them in their home, okay? Cause I don't, I don't wanna harm anybody in that way. And we're, this is family-owned, so we're gonna be responsible for this for the remainder of my life, and my son has joined us, he enjoys the business very much, so if there's any issues, we're here to answer, anything that would ever come up. But the design is, is practical. In addition to that, we have a lot of units coming on in Royal Oak. So you can't have short ceilings anymore in units, you know, because these eventually are designed to be sold as potential condominiums. So we're putting 9-foot as opposed to 8. The architect here, if you have any questions. So we're kind of in keeping with what's contemporarily going on right now, and by removing a floor, it makes it very economically burdensome, because the price goes up substantially for the remainder of the building, which I know is not, you know, a planning consideration, but it's a practical consideration for ourselves. So I'd kindly ask you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klooster?
So the report mentioned a 2-foot delta from the groundwater situation that was discovered after the planning commission approval. Can you speak to the rest of the 8 feet that you're asking for?
We can. There's a, that, that property kinda goes on an angle, you know, it's higher on one side, I believe it's higher on the Troy side than the Williamson's, William Street side, so it, it, it's, it kinda like a semi-walkout. So we came out of the water table and we opened, the parking was too short, so we had to add a, like, what is it, a foot and a half per parking? Can you address that, Peter? This is my son.
We were initially proposing to go 10 feet below grade, and we encountered water at 8 feet. So our geotech had asked us to put it 2 feet above the groundwater, it's, that's a 4-foot swing.
Okay.
Then there's a bit more for the garage, that ramp, in order for it to work. Self-parking's important, we understand that, so a few feet there and then a couple feet for the floors, for the 9 feet, that, that's the 10.
Is the, was the, was it the steepness of a ramp issue, is that?
It was part of it. And we went from preliminary conceptual plans to ready to go, and we encountered it and we said we, the ramp is important, we gotta be able to park it, and that, that was something we had to address.
The podium is made out of steel, as you know, and concrete, so you have steel members that are thicker, you don't want as many posts in there, and we had to thicken those a little bit, so it made, made the parking, we had to make it taller. And also, they were designed
were designed for eight-foot ceilings, that's not what you do today. Nine is kind of like what's in keeping in terms of the units, floor, ceiling, does that make sense?
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? There is a motion, Mayor.
Yeah, I just say, I mean, that's interesting. Uh, I'm glad we took a moment to, to hear you out. I mean, always from a, I guess we could say, from a practical perspective, we always think of, you know, no offense, but return on investment as far as, you know, want more units, want more, ever. In this case, it's, you're not getting the units, and, you know, you had a plan, and, you know, you dug down, and the water table's a little higher, uh, than you expected, and, uh, that could kill a project very quickly, but you made some adaptations. I think probably the only, maybe subjective element to this would be going from eight-something to nine-foot ceilings, uh, understanding that's more than the other, but the rest of the hardships with the safety of the parking garage and the water table makes sense to me. So, I think, I mean, from a, I, I guess, what I recall from the last meeting, we had a lot of concerns mostly about, um, traffic and light, and, you know, uh, disturbances to the neighbors directly across the street on the, on the east side. Um, and so, uh, I think, you know, while I appreciate the motion on the surface, I, I'm not going to support it, because I'd prefer to see, you know, I don't like the idea of a water pump going either, and pumping into our storm system, because even though it's not raining, or if it is raining, you got water underneath the ground, and we've been taking great measures to prevent water from going into our system. And so, this would, you know, by not doing it, I mean, we'd almost exasperate a problem versus solving a problem. Uh, and so, um, I think, but I would support a motion that, you know, I think this is a fair and reasonable hardship request, in my opinion.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the table?
Ms. Douglas? You know, I probably should have asked these questions before I made my motion, because I find their explanation reasonable, and, and, uh, I'll probably vote against my own motion.
I've had to do that several times, so it's good to have someone else in the drawing.
You can withdraw your motion.
Um, can I?
Yes.
No, I don't think so. Can I?
You don't know why not?
If we all agree?
I move to withdraw my motion.
You don't have to move, you just withdraw it.
Oh. No, actually, I think once a motion is made and seconded, it belongs to the table, and the table has to act on it.
I think you can withdraw your motion.
You probably could have voted no already by now. That'll work.
You've withdrawn your motion?
Yes, but the table has to accept it.
I have no objection.
All those in favor of withdrawing motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's withdrawn. Okay, is there a new motion?
I move to approve the proposal as submitted.
Is there support?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Douglas to support, uh, seconded by Mayor. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Order one, approved.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Yep.
Hopefully, no more surprises when you start digging.
Be able to admit when you're wrong.
We haven't, we haven't discovered woolly mammoth yet in Royal Oak, so, you know.
Always the potential. Okay. The third item under new business is a public hearing, it's a zoning ordinance text amendment for wireless communication facilities. Mr. Twain? Or is this Doug?
Uh, well, I'm gonna have Doug walk through it with you, he spent most of his time preparing it. Um, very, very briefly, as you'll see in the cover memo, uh, there are three different types of, or three different reasons why we, uh, prepared the revisions, um, in terms of, uh, addressing some of the newer regulations and requirements of the FCC and, and state federal law. Uh, we've identified those. We've also identified some text amendments that, um, an attempt to clarify required standards and procedures, and remove some unnecessary or repetitive language. And then we've also added, and those are highlighted in yellow, uh, we've also, uh, added a provision that would allow the planning commission some discretion of its, of the setback fall zone area, uh, if the engineers can provide you with a document that shows the tower or support facility would basically collapse upon itself, and that would become the new fall zone rather than the true or heights of the, uh, structure itself. So, those are three different, uh, um, reasons for some of these revisions, and, uh, I'll let Doug kind of give you an overview of, of the document, and, uh, then if you've got questions, we'll address them, and then you'll have a public hearing.
Okay. Ms. Beke?
Yeah, as Tim said, there's three different types of amendments we've proposed. Uh, the first, I'd like to address, are ones that came up in the recent discussion for the, um, the new support structure that's been reviewed over the last previous meetings here. There was some discussion about, uh, if a petitioner for a new support structure can demonstrate to the planning commission satisfaction, uh, that it would either collapse on itself or fall, uh, within the site, uh, would the planning commission be allowed to waive the maximum permitted setback from streets and residential zoning, uh, instead of having petitioners, uh, for them having to go first to the planning commission and then to the zoning board of appeals, uh, for a variance from those setbacks. To allow that process to happen, uh, as Tim said, those changes to the ordinance are highlighted in green, can be found on pages seven and ten. Uh, if those are implemented, that would allow during a site plan review, the planning commission to waive or modify required setbacks for a new support structure. Uh, if they do so, then the petitioners would then not have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance following. It's similar to other standards in the ordinance, where the commissions given discretion on various standards to help alleviate the number of, you know, variance application. The second type is some text amendments we've kind of had on the back burner and waiting for a while. Most of them are related to changes in FCC regulations in 2015 regarding what are now, or are, uh, small cells or distributive antenna systems. Uh, some different regulations were adopted then, but since they were adopted, the city has not updated our zoning ordinance to be in compliance with those new regulations. Uh, those changes can be found, highlighted on blue, on pages five and six. There's also some changes highlighted in blue on page three. Uh, most of those are just, uh, two definitions. One is on attached wireless communication systems. That one, again, is meant to be, uh, consistent with the new FCC regulations. Uh, the second, uh, definition of co-location, the current one we have is, uh, not consistent with the definition that's under federal and state law, so we're recommending that we update it so that it is consistent, uh, with state and federal law, to avoid any, uh, problems in the future. The last set of revisions are one that staff is recommending, you know, based on the current wording of the ordinance. Uh, our ordinance is adopted as based on a model ordinance that was crafted, uh, several years ago, you know, by kind of an ad hoc committee of different planners and city officials, and also wireless, uh, communication, uh, representatives. Uh, my former employer, I happen to be a member of that committee, so I'm, uh, pretty aware of what are the things that went in on crafting that. But some, uh, people took the model and adopted it for other communities, others changed other things after it was supported. Some of them wound up with an excessive amount of legalese and overly technical zoning information. So, what we're suggesting is to try to modify some of this language, so it is somewhat easier to read for either petitioners, staff as well, and laypeople, and to remove some of the overly repetitive language throughout the ordinance, again, just to make it easier to read and understand, uh, for everyone. Uh, those are on nearly all the pages, and again, those changes are highlighted in yellow. Um, I can be happy to answer any questions you might have, or any, um, issues you might have with some of the suggested language we're recommending.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Mayor?
Yeah, so some of the, specifically the language here in blue, uh, with the small antenna, small cell antenna, is this dealing a lot with the 5G protocol that's being rolled out, or is this something I'm?
I don't know if it was specifically ready to adapt, most of it, it was, they came about, the, uh, those changes were adopted by the FCC in 2015.
Okay.
So, I don't know if we, if it was known marketing-wise as the 5G system at that point. I believe they may be somewhat related.
Okay.
They were changes that the industry sought to have the FCC modify their standards to make it easier for them to implement, uh, small cells, and, uh, it's kind of had been the history with the FCC since the adoption of the federal act in 1996. Uh, they seem to be willing to modify their procedures to make it easier for the industry to implement certain things, this was one of them.
So, the FCC, and what we're doing is, we're basically making our ordinances compliant with federal law, or federal regulation. What happens if we don't do anything? I mean, I'm just, I, I, I know, I kind of know the answer to the question, but, you know.
Well, when someone applies for a, a small cell system, I guess we'll find out if we don't. Uh, fortunately, we haven't had any, any, uh, that have come in that have needed a site plan approval. Uh, most of the ones I've seen have been just administrative approval of co-locating on existing facilities. So, it hasn't been an issue to date.
But, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Liss, they would have the ability to, the petitioner would have the ability, if they wanted to install one and our ordinances weren't up to date, and we were to deny them based on our ordinances that weren't in compliance with the FCC, they would be able to file, I imagine, you know, some sort of complaint suit or whatever, and that would be remedied relatively quickly, I imagine, with damages.
There's also been, there's also changes in schedule coming from the state legislature, basically to do the same thing, to comply with FCC regulations, and allow the industry more leeway. Uh, the 5G technology they're talking about requires a lot more, uh, installations. It's very short-range, although it does have capacity for far more data.
But by, I guess, because we had even Monday night, we had some folks, and I appreciate them coming out, uh, from the neighborhoods and, and, you know, rightfully so, questioning, I mean, this is, I think, everyone's been talking about 5G, been talking about the bandwidth. Um, I don't know as much as perhaps I should know on it, but what I do know is, if we support at least this blue language here, it's not necessarily an endorsement of small cells or of 5G bandwidth or anything like that, it's saying, hey, we kind of, our hand is being forced a little bit, we have to do it. We could choose not to, but then the resistance that we run into is going to cost us some money on the legal side, and inevitably we're going to lose anyways. Do I understand that correctly?
I think so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, you know, folks know that the city isn't going around installing these or making it possible, it's, you know, the FCC that's permitting it, and we can't really stand in the way. And if we do, it could cost us.
And I would add, you'll notice that the, the language is simply modifying language that was already in there.
Right.
So, we had some provisions to already address some of these issues, and we're just simply trying to change it to be consistent with the federal law. So, it's not like it wasn't there, and it's brand-new.
Right.
Any other question, questions? No, Mr. Klooster?
Uh, I just, I'm just searching for a clarification on, um, some of the co-location terminology. The hypothetical being, any building wanted to put a small cell structure, like on their parapet, et cetera, is that currently allowed? Does this new text language modify that
Our current language doesn't specifically address small cells, uh, but there are current standards that do allow co-location of what are defined as attached wireless communication facilities, i.e. antennas, on either existing buildings or existing, uh, support structures or existing, uh, utility poles within rights of way.
And then, so under two, kind of defines the, like, ten-foot above the existing?
Yep.
Okay. And that's not new, that was in there, it's just being amended to be appropriate to the new regulations?
Yeah, the, the regulations that came out from the FCC basically said, you know, you, you know, it, when you review those, these are the standards you must apply. Um, that's where the standards in blue under, uh, so paragraph two, A through D on page five come from. You know, the FCC regulations are basically spelled out in great detail what community, what items the communities must look at when reviewing them, and we're not allowed to go beyond those parameters, or further restrict them than what's permitted by the FCC.
Any other questions? Ms. Beke?
Since we had talked about that current, the, the recent, um, tower going up, I've been looking at different towers and looking around where the towers are, and noticing them on the horizon more and stuff, and so I'm wondering, um, I see here, like, there's a change under C, D, that previously the language was to say the setback in the structure was from any kind of residential, and now it's being, um, blocked out and putting just one family residential or one family large lot. But at the same time, we have kind of, we're, we're increasing our numbers of multifamily units and, and condos, and so I'm wondering what the logic is in, in not having similar setbacks for other kinds of residential, um, as it, as it previously stated on C, D, in, in the sense of protecting people's views and such.
The main reason we, we're changing it to specific zoning district is, right now, there's no set parameters or definition on the zoning ordinance, on what is a residential zoning district. Obviously, yes, one-family residential, one-family large lot, even multiple-family residential can be considered a residential zoning district, but then we allow residential uses in just about every other zoning district except general industrial. For example, mixed-use one, mixed-use two. Are those residential zoning districts, or could they be defined as residential zoning district? It, something that hasn't been, you know, clarified or settled. So, what we'd like to do, instead of applying just generic type of a zoning district, i.e. residential, to define the actual districts that the setback would be required. Uh, we haven't included multiple, uh, family zoning districts from them, because I'm not sure exactly how many would be affected by it, but it's something that could be easily added in. Uh, but mostly, we just wanted to clarify that it's from those districts and not others that could, you know, be challenged and say, well, you allow dwelling units in this zoning district, therefore, it's a residential zoning district, and the setback should apply. Uh, instead of trying to apply a standard to just a generic term of different districts, we thought it best to spell out the exact zoning districts where the setback would apply.
And then, under, um, under A1E, about minimizing the negative visual impact of wireless communication facilities, um, on neighborhoods, community landmarks, historic sites, et cetera. This is a very challenging one, because there's one thing, when you're close to the tower, on the one hand, like, if, if a tower is tall, one fifty, two fifty, uh, feet, if it's next to other tall buildings, when you're near it, 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 and even when you see it from a distance, it blends in more, but when it's out in the middle of, like, uh, green space, or if it's, or even like the one that's going to be now in the downtown, it's not going to bother anymore, we've worked on the screening at the ground level, but it's going to be for the distances where it's more intruding on people's visual. And obviously, that's a big chan, uh, challenge to, uh, work on the visual impact. But I'm wondering when there's an application made for these types of towers. Again, we didn't see any, um, we didn't see any, um, renderings of the height or the aesthetic of the tower other than the ground level on this last one we addressed. And I'm just wondering when they apply, I see something here that says that there should be some kind of assessment whether towers in the area, so that you might have co-location, which, again, minimizes visual, because there's fewer of them. But I'm wondering also if there has to be rendering so you see, take into consideration how it's being viewed. Because, again, when I think about these towers, now that I keep noticing them everywhere on the side of the highway, here, there, and then I think about Royal Oak, I think to myself, like, if I were to put a tower somewhere, it's going to be the least intrusive, I think about Beaumont's parking lot, or the Meyer parking lot, or someplace that's kind of, there's no one around to look at it, except cars, people coming out of their cars. Whereas, then, when I see it in other places, even the side of the highway, it's quite obtrusive to the view of, there's a nice field or a farm, and then there's a wireless tower. Um, so I guess, do they have to show anything about the aesthetic impact when they apply, is one question. And then the last question I have, um, is do we have any height limits that we impose or can impose? I didn't, I don't think I saw them here, and I'm just wondering if that's something that's desirable, either for, for the same reason as far as the aesthetics go.
Well, the answer to the first one, on page seven, and then on to? Well, the answer to the first one, on page seven, and then on to eight, it does list the, uh, what their, um, am I got the right section? Nope, I'm not. Scratch that. I'm starting on the bottom of page nine and then continuing on to 10, uh, under subsection D, application requirements list all of the materials they are, uh, required to provide. Um, I don't think we have anything specifically that addresses some of the aesthetic issues you're looking at. That's one thing we could possibly add to, but it is also something that, in any application before the planning commission, that you could ask for them to provide or during a review, uh, the staff review of one week and just administratively ask them to provide.
I think, I think part of the issue is you're referencing that the beginning is a provision that you're looking at as a body versus an ordinance provision, meaning you're going to take each site as it's presented to you and each tower as it's presented to you and determine whether it needs mitigating or whether it needs some, uh, adjustment to it. If you put it in an ordinance and says, everybody's got to do blank, then everybody's got to do that unless you grant them a waiver. So I think the first sentence up there lays a burden, or the first section you are referring to lays a burden on you as part of your review and it's in front of you to make a determination on, is there any impact? And if so, what do you want it, what do you want them to do to mitigate it? The submission requirements are, you know, they'll, if, if you need more detail, just as you did with the most recent proposal, you ask them to submit more detail. Um, staff will ask them to submit and address various issues when it gets in front of you. If you have other issues that you need more detail on, you will ask that. I, I don't think we can do a comprehensive list that's going to generate every one of the planning commission's concerns or issues, uh, for every potential site, because again, we don't know where they're at. In terms of location, you are going to get them all over town, because, uh, you can't just locate one in the Meyer's parking lot and that serves everybody's needs. And we do have them all over town. We have them on top of the parking decks. We have them on top of Washington Square Building. We are trying to co-locate them, so you don't have a support structure. Um, they are generally not put on the parapet wall. We tried to get them to put back in equipment sheds. So there's a lot of things we're doing to keep these antennas less intrusive as, as possible. But, um, I don't know that we can write an ordinance provision that says they'll do A, B, and C, and D in every site, because then, then you're going to be granting waivers or saying that doesn't apply for every site. I think we'll keep it a little generic. And then as part of your review, is there anything historic or is there anything that's on that particular location, a case-by-case that needs to be addressed?
Ms. Bickie?
I, I guess my question is more like, is, is there, because I think at the beginning of this, you were saying you're trying to make this so that the fewer things would come to us, that therefore staff would be addressing them. If there's a, a look at the 3D impact versus the 2D, because looking at a map is one thing, but looking at it overall with the other buildings around it, I guess is another thing, in terms of a rendering to understand the visual impact, I guess is what I'm saying. And most of the ones on top of the buildings, I think, would be less intrusive than the one we saw recently. Um, but again, I would agree with how you would determine it'd be appropriate. But my thing was more about the 3D versus 2D, um, rendering.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedges? Not seeing all of the public hearing, um, rules of the public hearing, um, raise your hand. I'll welcome you up and you have three minutes. Mr. Razor?
Royal Oak. Um, you know, I first have to say, um, I've lived here and had my business here for 25 years, and it wasn't lightly that, all of you know that, I filed a lawsuit against the city based on that cell tower that was approved. And it wasn't a decision that was taken lightly. I mean, it wasn't my first choice or my 10th or my 50th, but it was the right choice. And let me tell you, this zoning ordinance amendment is specifically designed to deal with the issues in the litigation. Let me give you an example. Page eight.
Subsection.
In H, I'm sorry, I. Changes support structure shall be of an alternative design to may be of an alternative design. That's directly changed, because it's one of the central issues in the litigation. Your city attorney had input into these changes. It was given to you, and they're trying to sell this to you as something that's good for the city. We have a clear legislative intent here. The support structures shall be an alternative design, such as a statue, sculpture, steeple, bell, or clock tower, flagpole tree, or other form. Now, this is being softened, so you can have ugly industrial buildings, big, huge support structures in your downtown, regardless of who is on this border when that happens. All this yellow language is designed for the litigation, not designed to make a change, and it strips you folks of your discretion in terms of making a lot of the decisions. You bring up a great point about residential districts. And my point in the litigation was the downtown is a residential district, and this is a horribly ugly thing. And it should be a setback back, because of the visual impact of the height. Well, they want to change that, so it doesn't apply to your downtown. And these are not changes that you requested at your last meeting. These are changes that were made for litigation. And when you consider this, look at the list of reasons that you should change your zoning ordinances, which is on the first page of the write-up. None of these include pending litigation. They include court orders. There's been no court order. There's been no legislative changes. You're, you're, you're being misled. And let me tell you what else you've been misled about. Oakland County had other alternatives that they didn't explore for the tower. There's a huge tower that's over 300 feet tall at 696 and I-75. They didn't explore it. There's a new 300-foot tower being built by Rackham that they didn't explore for the downtown tower. Now, when Birmingham and Pontiac were faced with this, and Pontiac has a lot denser buildings, they forced Oakland County to go with other solutions, and that's why they don't have a huge tower in their downtown. So here's my ask. At this meeting, you can vote to reconsider your site plan approval, and you can see the evidence that Oakland County failed to consider a tower being built at Rackham by the Michigan State Police. They failed to consider a, a tower owned by MDOT at 696 and I-75, and those towers would serve us just as well as the out-of-town towers in the industrial districts of Birmingham and Pontiac. And I think when you see that you were misled by Oakland County, when they came here and they told you that the only alternative was this huge, ugly, out-of-place, awful tower in our downtown, when you see that you were misled, I think you should take the opportunity today. Think you should reconsider your site plan. I think you can put that off until another meeting, so that you have all the evidence. And I think what you're going to find is that Oakland County is diligently pursuing now these options, because now that this has been exposed, now at the zoning board meeting, when they indicated that they never considered options. And they didn't consider options, because they don't get along with MDOT.
Thank you, Mr. Razor.
Thank you very much. I have some prepared remarks that I would like to give to Mr. Hedges, because in three minutes, I couldn't include them all. It's a very nice signal. Happy holidays.
Anyone else? Not seeing all those. We'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to this side of the table. Um, Mr. Twain, you looking for?
Well, if you're supportive of the revisions, you would, uh, have a resolution that would recommend them to the city commission as a tax amendment. Um, and they would be forwarded up to the city commission for their consideration at a future meeting. If you have questions that you want staff to address, um, we would also do that. Um, there is a suggested resolution on page two of the report, if you're comfortable with it, that would forward it to the city commission.
Okay.
But you have the ability to, uh, take action, postpone, uh, be supportive, ask revisions of the tax amendment. Um, again, as Doug said, and we've indicated, there's a, uh, three purposes of the, uh, the ordinance revisions, uh, to address, uh, various issues.
Thank you, Ms. Bickie.
I, I guess I just wanted to follow up a little bit on what I was saying, because, and, and again, separate from that, um, the comments about the lawsuit, because I haven't seen any of that information, or I'm, I, I'm aware that it is happening, but I have no awareness of the details. But when I read this, and again, considering what we have seen and considering looking at the aesthetics of those towers, um, like I say, quite a bit in the last couple of months since we started addressing this issue, I guess personally, I agree that, to me, that, that tower doesn't have a place in this space, and unless someone else could convince me why. And, and this is the reason I'm concerned about that particular tower on the AT&amp;T lot. And again, I think the aesthetics at the ground level we addressed, but its existence, we didn't really, um, in terms of its height and some of those things. And, and if I understood properly what was presented to us, the county needs a 250-foot tower for safety and security. The police need a shorter one, which now has been attached to this tower. And AT&amp;T wants a tower, which I assume they would presume we wouldn't give them permission for without attaching it to public safety. That's my assumption, which would also be, they said shorter, but they would go along with this one to combine the three. And all I want to say is, I, I have been supporting that tower, recognizing that I'm assuming, because we're not part of these discussions, that the county and the city and AT&amp;T and whomever else is involved with the potential of co-location have, have exhausted other potential. Because if there are existing taller towers, which I'm not aware of the ones you suggested until you just said that, to me, it would be smarter to have that somewhere else and have the minimal size in our close downtown to what we need. This language in and of itself, most of it I'm okay with in terms of a first reading. But again, considering that tower and, and that going forward, it does feel like it's a retrofit to that situation, which again, I'm stating, just having read it by itself, not knowing what the details of any of that other, um, business is. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you, Ms. Bickie. Any other comments or a motion?
Motion to support the offered resolution on page two of our memo.
Mr. Kloster, to follow the, um, uh, support on page two, is that the first paragraph, Mr. Kloster? Um, where is the planning commission on the public hearing?
Correct.
Is that whole, is it the, repair us? Okay. Is there support for this? Support by Ms. Douglas. Any discussion? Mayor?
To say in general, I mean, I think most of the changes, uh, seem appropriate. Obviously, this is going to go to the city commission. We have a little additional food for thought to think about, based on the public hearing. Um, so, um, I don't have an issue supporting this now. And, um, you know, but certainly there's a reason why we have multiple, um, you know, processes when it comes to the ordinances. So, um, still keep an open mind, but I think the changes recommended by staff, um, uh, I generally support at the moment.
Any other discussions, motions? Not seeing all those. If you ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I guess I'll say no.
Okay, so four to one. Aye, it moves on to the city commission. Okay, on to other business. This is a sign variance to, a request to install freestanding sign with electronic message center for a retail store, Tennis and Golf Company, while maintaining non-conforming freestanding sign at 30211 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twain?
Uh, this shopping center, which includes the Tennis and Golf, has two freestanding signs. Uh, one at, one at the north end of the site, uh, as, as you'll see in the report, has a height of 20 feet and a sign area of 100 square feet. And one at the south end, uh, which is approximately 22 feet height and a sign area of 70, roughly 78 square feet. Um, the freestanding signs are allowed under this sign area to have a maximum height of 16 feet and a maximum sign area of 42 square feet. Uh, so both signs are, are non-conforming under the sign ordinance. Um, the shopping center, um, does have sufficient frontage, um, over, over 300 feet of frontage, uh, to have two, uh, freestanding signs. Uh, so that's not a, an issue as far as having two signs. But both signs are too tall and too big. Uh, the petitioner is proposing to replace the freestanding sign at the south end of the site, uh, and leaving the one at the north end in place as it is. Uh, the new sign would have a height of 14 feet and a sign area of, uh, 68, roughly 69 square feet. Uh, proposed sign would, would exceed the maximum square footage, uh, and therefore, uh, they're requesting a variance, uh, uh, from the planning commission. The new sign, freestanding sign, would also have electronic message center of approximately 29 square feet. Uh, the maximum that's allowed under the sign areas would be equal to half the freestanding sign area, or in this case, 21, uh, square feet. Uh, so they would need another variance in order to obtain that. Because the ordinance doesn't allow, uh, non-conforming signs to remain when they're proposing a new one, uh, you would also need to address the, uh, uh, north freestanding sign and, and grant a, a variance to allow it to remain, uh, in terms of its height and size, uh, possibly until, uh, that sign is either modified or adjusted in the future, you can address it then. But those are the variances that you would have to address based on this request.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? Is Fisher here? Welcome. Your name, please?
Uh, my name is Haytham Situ, Situ Industries at 44731 Woodward Avenue, Pontiac, Michigan, uh, representing the, uh, the business owner at, uh, Tennis and Golf. First of all, good evening, and, uh, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. Uh, as you know, uh, year after year, uh, businesses, uh, are declining, you know, local business, brick and mortar, to online, uh, shopping and such. And, um, uh, this particular location, uh, is no different than any other business. And so for them to thrive, they're looking at, um, expanding their marketing opportunity, and an LED sign is the best way to go. Um, here, the situation is, because of the size, I believe, is, is in question, um, we, we're proposing to lower the sign substantially, rather than just reface the existing sign, uh, leaving it where it is. Um, we're lowering it, reducing this overall square footage, even reducing the width a little bit, just to help out as much as we can. Um, Woodward Avenue is a very, very busy road, and, um, uh, in no means is this sign, uh, larger than many of the other signs on Woodward Avenue. Not saying that it's, uh, detrimental, but, uh, for that speed and that, that's, that kind of traffic, uh, and that kind of setback, and the amount of trees that this particular property has, um, it, it actually dwarfs, um, uh, in comparison. The, uh, the height, um, currently, we set it at 84 inches above ground, just to be able to clear. There's a little, um, uh, wall right there at the sidewalk also. So we're trying to get the best of both worlds, clearing the vehicles that are parked next to it, as well as avoiding treetops that were, that would hinder the, uh, the, uh, the, you know, the taller signage. Like any other business, local business, they're, they're struggling to keep, uh, things moving. And the only other way to advertise, obviously, is to the local public. I mean, even if you get on, uh, the internet to look for a local business to shop, as you know, you probably have, um, Google and Amazon will probably pop up and drive you away to businesses that are thousands of miles away or probably in other country, even if you're looking for a local business. So the, uh, the business owner here is, uh, wants to maximize the opportunity with their sign. Uh, they opted to go with a very, uh, high-end quality LED display that is a 13-millimeter, full color. Uh, not to say that it's going to be used in any gaudy way or anything, but the clarity of it is that where it would look like a photographic image, more than a pixelated, uh, old cheap-looking kind of sign. It will conform in all ways. It will be photocell sensitive, so that means it will conform, uh, in accordance to the ambient light. Uh, there will be absolutely no motion or video or flashing or any of those, uh, kind of criterias. Uh, additionally, uh, it is a centrally, centrally controlled, cellular service-controlled. So what that means is, it allows us to, uh, support, just as we do with other cities, for example, Amber Alerts, uh, emergency, uh- Amber Alerts, emergency situations that the city or the state government requires. They would send a message, and that could be displayed automatically on the display as well. I think that pretty much answers all the, or addresses the situation we have at this location. And I welcome any questions you might have. The size is based on modulars. We're an actual manufacturer, and we're actually on Woodward Avenue, just north of Square Lake, next to St. Joseph Hospital. Modular displays, they're made in sections. That's how we create the certain sizes and such. We came up with the size because it was an ideal visually. We went back and forth and looked at other businesses in the area and other signs in the area, and it didn't seem to be that out of the norm for Woodward Avenue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? I have a question. Been going back and forth. The existing sign is 22 feet in height. They want to decrease it to 14 feet in height?
Yes.
And that's still too high?
No.
The height's okay. It's the area.
The area and the size of the electronic message center.
Okay. So the area of this sign plus the area of the messaging on the sign? Okay.
Are we, I'm sorry. Remind me again, and I'm having a, you know, it's been a long week. The area, when we talk about the sign, we're talking about the entire sign or just the non-message board part of the sign?
You're talking about the frame around now.
The frame around, so the entire sign?
The entire sign.
All right.
It's not just the words.
So the message board is?
The message board is the frame as well.
Part of the overall overage, but it's over within itself, within its category.
I believe the way the ordinance is written is electronic message word can't be more than half of the allowed freestanding sign. The allowed is 42 square feet, so the max would be 21.
This one's 78, I think.
Max would be 21?
Square feet, yes.
And this, and they're asking for?
29.19.
29, okay, there we go, 29.
29. 29.03.
I'm sorry, Ms. Douglas.
So why does it say, why does item C wave four feet from maximum permitted 16-foot height?
That's the existing sign on the north end that they're not touching.
Right. So what we're saying is wave that because it's, the ordinance applies to both signs there. We'd have to wave the existing one there.
Okay, got it.
So we're looking at both of them.
The ordinance doesn't allow you to keep, to put in a new sign and keep a non-conforming sign.
Understood.
So we have to look at both of them.
So you've got to address both the signs.
Okay. Thank you.
And is the other sign conforming in terms of overall size? Do any of these other letter points deal with that sign?
The last two, C and D, it's too big, it is too tall.
Got it.
So you're dealing with the height and the square footage of that sign as well.
So the other sign would have to be modified as well?
If you denied it. If you grant the waiver to leave the north sign, then it can stay.
Okay, is that?
I think that, if I may interject, I think the way they have it written here is to basically just carve out the north sign and just say you're going to waive the, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, the four foot and the 58 square feet from the maximum square footage, just because, you know, we're really talking about this sign on the south side that we're making changes to with the?
Well, understand, this is their request.
Right.
In order to grant.
The way you wrote it up is to keep that sign the same.
You could tell them to change that one as well.
Sure, sure.
This is not a staff suggestion, this is?
I'm just trying to explain the way you wrote it up.
Right.
The way you wrote it up is based on their request to keep the sign on the north untouched.
To ignore it.
And to do that, you have to waive it.
You have to waive these provisions.
We have to waive more height.
And more square footage.
More everything, right, okay. Got it.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Ms. Bickie.
The sign on the north, that's the one that is to be, well, potentially grandfathered in, it has multiple businesses listed on it, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, those are the other tenants that are.
Okay. Oh, I see, there's a bigger one down here. Sorry, I'm looking at the, but if it has multiple businesses on it, it still pertains only to this business, though, or to the whole complex?
Those signage on the site.
I see, because it's considered as a unit because the site is one unit, okay. Not because it's one business, because it's by the street, all right.
And we're not considering, pardon me, any of these signs on the building. This is just the pole sign.
Right.
So if we were to... Never mind. I'll push the pause button for a moment.
Well, you can, you can deal with them totally separately. Again, they're listed as individual items. You can deal with the south sign, which is the one being planned for, being proposed. And you can deal with the square footage of that sign, which is A. You can deal with B, which is the electronic message center sign. Those two deal with the existing sign. Or I mean, the existing, the proposed sign. C and D deal with the north sign that's existing and not proposed to change.
Eric has a question.
Or you can deal with all at once.
Eric has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kloster.
Yeah, so I think we've, at least in the recent history, we've been fairly consistent in how we've handled sign variances that come in front of this commission. And when we get a chance to ask to make signs comply with the ordinance, we tend to go that way, with the exception of extenuating circumstances. And in this, in this situation, I don't see extenuating circumstances that would lean me towards suggesting that we allow these signs to continue to be non-conforming.
I would agree. What we're saying is we should be dealing with both sides through this body, okay. I would agree with that, too. Any, any further discussion, questions for petitioner, Mr. Twing, or a motion?
Question.
Ms. Douglas.
Is Tennis &amp; Golf Company paying for the sign changes, or is the landlord?
Exactly, ma'am, it's Tennis &amp; Golf, so they really have nothing to do with the overall property.
Please. Your name?
Andy Shepherd. I am one of the owners of the Tennis &amp; Golf Company. We just purchased this out of bankruptcy in April 29, trying to save a local business. And honestly, we're doing this because the existing sign is a complete eyesore, and we're trying to make an improvement to the overall appearance of the plaza and to our business. I guess the alternative is that sign just remains. We are paying for the sign, it's a $30,000 sign. The landlord is not contributing to it at all. And because that sign addresses our building or our business and the other sign addresses the other businesses in there, I understand how you're looking at it as a unit, but it has nothing to do with us as a tenant.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. Ms. Bickie.
I guess, as Tim was suggesting earlier, like, considering the two signs separately, if we set aside the sign on the north that pertains to the whole plaza and look at this sign alone, if I'm understanding correctly, if it were to go into compliance, the LED portion should be a little bit smaller, basically. Is that correct? But the overall sign is more or less, or the overall sign would be compliant if the LED portion had been, it made, no, I'm incorrect?
No, you're about 30 square feet over the allowed.
Oh, 30 square feet is a lot, okay.
I have a, on that same thought, though, what's the square footage of the existing sign right now? Remind me again what that is.
The existing one is 78 square feet.
100.
On the south end.
Setting across, we should talk about the south one.
The one we're talking about.
The one they want to buy or purchase.
Yes, the one that says Tennis &amp; Golf.
78 square feet's the existing sign. They're proposing 68.9.
So they are doing a proposal that knocks it down two feet below the 16-foot.
Below. The height complies, the square footage does not.
The square footage doesn't comply, but it's also less square footage than what it is today. So it is an improvement, it's just not meeting the requirements.
And I guess, oh, sorry. And I guess, considering that specific spot, that setback in the lawn, I'm wondering if it being a little bit larger is reasonable, given the setback, because some of the places on Woodward are very close, like, the parking and everything is right on the street, and this one particularly has, actually has a setback, which a lot of them don't as you come further south. But anyway, so again, either A, to make it in compliance would be just to make it a little bit smaller, or significantly smaller, I guess 30 square feet is significant. If they were to do that, and we were just, then we would have to waive just the north sign staying if they were to agree to make it smaller. Otherwise, we have to give the agreement for both.
Mr. Twing, maybe you mentioned this, and I apologize if you did. If this was a brand-new, this was just built, would, and they came forward, would they be allowed to have two pole signs for this?
Yes. The ordinance allows, if you've got more than 300 linear feet of frontage, you can have two pole signs on the site.
Thank you.
So the number isn't an issue, it's height, size.
Okay. Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the past, we've also had a precedent where if the sign improves, like, as far as, you know, it shrinks, it goes down in height. I know we waived it. I think what might be a little different in this case is, you know, the electronic, the size of the electronic messaging board, it is eight square feet, which doesn't seem like a lot when you're driving by, but, you know, we haven't been too overly ecstatic about electric messaging signs in our community, because not everyone, you know, has the same. You can't control the content, you can't control, rightfully so, freedom of speech, and this, under the new Supreme Court ruling, it becomes even more difficult for us to, you know, go from something that people appreciate to something that people dread in the neighborhood, regardless if it's on Woodward or, you know, anywhere else. So we've been very cautious, and I think rightfully so about that.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor. As a matter of fact, the City of Troy called our company to help them with the new ordinance because someone sued the city, and they ended up with those massive billboards all over the place. And I agree with you to that extent. And there's several, I mean, churches and other businesses that are far beyond the 32 square feet, even, 32, 48 square feet that you have in the city. And the way that we control it is by, we upgraded the software content dramatically. We actually took the motion part of it out of the end user's control, so that they cannot even have that motion video features on their display, as well as the brightness sensors. We took that away because we, a lot of ordinances, you know, they'll get passed, and then next thing you know, at night, it's blaring and it's bright and so on. So all those features are done on the backside now, so that we help a lot of cities enforce those closing regulations, as well as the timing. We make that as a default. For example, the city, I believe, requires a 30-second minimum before changes, and that's also implemented as a standard, rather than, I suggested, something on the server, on the client side. So they actually have to log in to make those changes on the server, which are already preset, so it limits those capabilities. And they do get a nice software that allows them to put graphics on there, rather than pixelated images that don't look right. And if you notice also, their logo, the Tennis &amp; Golf logo up there, is small, it's nice, unique, it's pretty. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure if you've been to this location, it caters to families and such. The previous owner, I think, half a million dollars in renovation in this place. It's absolutely amazing, and this is just something to help enhance, to help them thrive and, you know, try to advance to the next generation.
So, Ms. Douglas?
Well, I just, I'm, I mean, irrespective of my antipathy for digital signs, I feel that, and Mr. Situ referred to the speed of traffic going by, and knowing that the closest traffic signal is Webster, and that, you know, I mean, people get a real head of steam going between 12 and 13 mile, and I'm just concerned about people trying to read whatever it says, and, you know, I mean, I'm concerned about the safety issue here. And if we tell them to take it down to 42 square feet, to what is permitted, then you're going to have a little tiny and even worse electric message sign here. So, you know, again, I'm willing to be the guinea pig here and take a swing at this and move that we deny, where am I? A, B, A and B. And approve C and D. That is my, to leave the existing other sign there as it is, but to ask the store to comply with the ordinance. And if they can squeeze an electronic sign in there, I mean, that's fine, but I want to see this sign comply with the ordinance.
Okay, is there support? The motion was made to deny A and B and to approve C and D. No support. Is there another motion? Mr. Kloster?
Motion to deny all requested variances.
Motion to deny A, B, C, and D. Is there support? No support. Is there another motion?
Looks like we're running out of combinations here. Just one second, sir. So I think, I mean, I think by, I appreciate where Mr. Kloster's coming from, by denying everything, I think what we do is we keep the status quo, and that is way out of compliance, right? So it doesn't really accomplish, you know, the goal of, you know, getting to a smaller sign and a shorter sign and maybe a more aesthetically pleasing sign. I do think that, you know, in the spirit of trying to get there and aiming to get there and improving the situation, I'm more leaning, and I don't know if we can even do it with the aspect ratios that we have required in our, but if, you know, I'm more willing, because it's on Woodward, I think Ms. Bickie makes a good point, there's a setback there a little bit more than some normal signs, like, to support A, C, and D, but if we can get in compliance with the electronic element on it, I think that would make me a lot more comfortable. But I'm not sure, based on the dimensions of the sign, if we can hit the aspect ratio without, I don't know, changing the messaging area. But I think that, to me, would be a, given the area it's in, a reasonable compromise. But I want to hear from my colleagues.
Ms. Bickie.
I guess to me, again, there seems to be a proliferation of preferences for these LED signs, which, when I see them, I don't feel like I can read any of them, and they just seem like a total waste personally to me. And so I would be inclined to want to approve this new Tennis &amp; Golf sign, within compliance of what the ordinance says, which moving it down as you've done, but then shrinking the face, and if you have to give part of the LED sign and just have a good sign for your business that's more visible, I mean, that would be my personal preference. But I'm okay with separating the two signs and addressing them separately in general. That's where I am.
So, so let me try this, let me split this into two, because it seems like there's a, I mean, there are opinions about the second sign, and let's decide what we're going to do with the second sign, and then deal with the Tennis &amp; Golf sign. So I'm going to make a motion to approve C and D.
That means just leave the second sign, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I'm going to try.
I would second that, just to get it off. I would second that, just to get it off the table.
To approve C and D, so to allow the second sign to remain, and maybe, there are five of us, you know, we vote on it, we may, we've made a decision.
So...
And you're not addressing E and B at all?
Not right now.
So, so I have a logic question that I figure you guys can answer, you're a lot smarter than I am, I see what you're trying to do, but by approving C and D, does that create any sort of, it seems like C and D are, they are more conditional upon, you know, doing something with the, with the south end sign, but is there any danger breaking it apart and doing C and D, because the property owner, or the petitioners for C and D haven't come here, does this lock this into some sort of approval, or is it already have an approval, I imagine? Does it prevent, let me, let me ask it a different way, if the people or the individuals that own the, the mall there come to us, and they want to change their sign, because we vote on this and we approve C and D, are they, now, we lose that opportunity to bring them into compliance, moving forward at a future date?
Well, the, the sign ordinance is set up in such a way that it's not intended to grant you continued use, if you want to be clear, you could approve C and D, subject to, uh, any future revision would require compliance, so you grant it to stay in its current configuration, and if, if they need a permit to reface it or redo it, then they'd have to bring it into compliance, but you can leave it the way it is now. To answer your first part of your question, if, if they brought you a sign for tennis and golf that complied with the sign ordinance, I believe the building of R M would still say they need a variance to leave the north sign, so you'd still be dealing with C and D regardless whether this one complied or didn't.
So, we can put a little catch in there to protect the city, as to not give a free license to the non-petitioners.
Yeah, just for clarity.
And then if it passes, then we're still protected then to get compliance, and then, you know, the petitioner here then has options, at least if this is the only motion that passes, they won't have to come back here and, and then, unless notwithstanding, we do something different with A and B, you know, after this motion.
Ms. Beaky.
I can't hear a support yet, though.
Can I, can I?
Beaky supported it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was support on that, and I don't, I didn't hear a support.
I supported it if we're splitting it, I think I did support that, if I'm understanding that we're gonna separate, as long as it's not gonna mess up the city in the future in terms of getting a potential, a, a possibility of addressing that sign, I want to ask one question, if I could, to the petitioner, can I?
Sure.
I, I want to ask, have you talked to the owner at all, given this denial, about addressing that other sign, 'cause it's also not in compliance, if that's not your sign, the other one, has there been any discussion with that landowner or the building owner about addressing this problem, so that you could bring that forward at the same time?
No, as far as I understood, they didn't, I mean, they have a variance when that sign was erected.
And they assume it's still?
Correct.
Okay. But you, you haven't tried to influence them, and they have not suggested they're coming forward to update their sign?
No, that sign's, they have no intention of...
Changing it, okay.
So, I'm, I, I don't think I'll support this, I, I think this is an opportunity to deal with these signs on Woodward, the way we've been doing it, we did it with Arby's, we just did it with somebody else recently, I can't remember who, and it's working out well, and now we have another opportunity, I understand your situation, I appreciate you coming in here, I, I don't think the LED sign's a winner on, on this, I live down Webster, and I come through here, and the traffic flies down here, I don't know if an LED sign's gonna help you at all, that's my opinion, but I just think we have an opportunity here to manage this, these, this signage down here, and I don't want to have a missed opportunity, I can appreciate the asterisk that you're throwing our way, Tim, that we might have an opportunity down the road, but I, I just, I can't support this.
Well, just to be clear, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, what I heard was, if we support this motion on C and D, then what that basically does is, you know, two things can happen, one, the sign stays as it is.
The sign to the...
To the south.
To the south.
The tennis sign stays as it is.
Okay.
Or two, maybe the petitioner decides to go back and, you know, get rid of the digital board, or, you know, make the sign compliant with the digital board and the, and the, and the square footage of the sign, and therefore, they don't have to worry about coming back and getting C and D, so you get that, you know what I mean?
So, he gets a short sign, and he, and he...
Meets...
And he gets fifty-eight feet waived.
No, 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 this is just C and D, this is just the way, um...
Yeah, that D is waived fifty-eight square feet from maximum permitted forty-two.
The north side.
Oh, that's the north.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so the way I, I hear what you're saying, but I think with, the way the motion is on the table, with the north sign, what we're essentially saying is, if the petitioner comes back and wants to comply with the sign ordinance, and they don't have to come back with the other property owner, not other property, but the other stewards, you know, whoever...
Okay.
...manages the sign, it doesn't take care of A and B, which we can address after this motion, but at least it gives the petitioner, even if they don't want to do it, at least the option to not have to come back here and get another waiver on this C and D if they decide to comply, if A and B aren't approved, that's the way I understand it. Am I way crazy? Eric's looking at Eric, Eric can keep with my babble.
Go ahead.
Okay, good, thumbs up.
It's right or wrong?
Yeah, I got it.
It's right, right?
I'm sorry, I'm slowing the uptake, I'm still, so the south sign area is forty-two square feet, and the proposed sign area is sixty-eight, but we're not dealing with that.
Nope, just C and D.
Just the twenty-one, oh, that's the message, okay.
Just because they don't have control over the other sign, or you're trying to separate it.
We're approving this height here, this fourteen feet.
No.
No, that's a different...
No. We're just allowing the north sign to stay until the other property owner might come forward and, and want to change it, just because this, this business cannot influence, well, maybe we could try to make you influence, but, mm-hmm. Can he, she's the chair.
This is the north sign.
Right.
What they're proposing, what the resolution is, is to grant C and D, which are this one and this one.
To let, to let them have it, okay.
They haven't, haven't done, and the C and D are contingent sign, if they modify it in the future, they have to comply.
Okay.
Or, or get another variance.
We're just unraveling their sign from the other one. With this motion, the net effect is unraveling, you know, having to do two signs for the one, because actually, they wouldn't be able to, I don't even think, properly petition for the other property owner's sign anyways, so it would be a moot no point.
They have, they have a comment.
Uh, yes, Ms. Douglas. And I kind of don't want to put them crosswise with their landlord, I mean, I'm just picturing the discussion where they, they come back and say, yeah, we got our sign, but got bad news for you, I mean...
Here's an X.
So, you know, given the circumstances here, I mean, that's part of my rationale for not wanting to force this change on that north sign.
Okay.
It's rare that we have these long parcels.
I've heard from your land, we've heard from your landlord in the past.
Any other discussion on this? So, the motion is to approve C and D.
With the asterisk that if someone wanted to change it.
Until it's modified. Until they seek modification.
And they is?
The building owner.
The landlord.
The landlord, okay.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Three to two.
Three to two.
Three to two, it passes.
Could I just show the hands, who was yes, who was no, please?
Yes.
Yes.
But that basically just tables that sign.
It unencumbered them from the other side.
And I will look at this sign.
Yeah.
Because we haven't voted on A and B yet.
Right.
Do you have any comment about making it in compliance? Oh, I shouldn't, sorry.
So, are we...
We're good with C and D.
Okay. Are we done with this item, or are you...
Up to your ass.
Back to A and B.
Second motion?
That's the hardest.
To address A and B?
I'll, I'll make a motion for A right now, to allow for the variance of the overall area, I think my graver concern on this one is with the electronic messaging, and maybe we carve that one out, and my rationale is, again, with the setback, and hopefully creating a condition where we do get an improvement versus a, you know, non-improvement, meaning that the existing sign remains, I do believe, and I trust the petitioner, that, you know, if some requests aren't granted, then the existing sign will remain there, and if they're saying that we want to see an improvement to these signs, i.e. being smaller and shorter, maybe we get it two feet shorter than what the maximum is, but the area's a little bit bigger, it's kind of a trade-off, maybe in some weird way, you know, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we support, or that we waive the twenty-six point eight-three feet from the maximum permitted forty-two square feet sign area proposed.
Thereby allowing a sixty-eight point nine square foot sign.
Correct.
Okay.
Irreg, not irregardless is not a word, I'm trying to learn, my mother's teaching me grammar every day.
Regardless.
She's still working on it.
Just for clarity, if you're not gonna grant B, I would suggest you add denial of B, just for clarity of the motion.
I don't, I don't know, I kind of want to talk about B afterwards.
Okay.
Because I think that, you know, I'm gonna hear all the logic with the electronic sign, if someone wants to make a motion to deny it, and that's what the majority is, then that's what it is, I, I have a problem with the size of the electronic messaging board.
Long as B's addressed, then.
Yeah, B will be addressed.
All right.
Is there support?
There's a comment.
I just have a question, if we allow the area with A, and the ordinance reads up to half of the sign area, does that automatically allow the LED sign area as is, since it's half of the sign area?
No, the, this electronic message center is limited on the permitted sign area, so it's gotta be half of forty-two square feet.
Okay.
So, twenty-two, twenty-one square feet.
So, that's where we got to twenty-one.
I see.
Is there support?
To grant A.
To grant A.
No support.
I want to make a, can I make a comment? I would support the larger sign, but with the smaller electronic, no, no, that's what you're trying to get?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, well, the motion, the motion that I put on the table said, hey, we're getting ten square feet smaller sign, and we're getting a, you know, whatever drop by so many feet, and then if that area's approved, then, from Mr. Klooster's question to Mr. Twing, my understanding is that max, they could have a twenty-one square foot electronic sign on top of the overall square footage, which, of, of the variance that, so you would be able to still have, if we looked at B, we could either deny B, and they just get a regular sign, but it's bigger, but smaller than what it is today, but bigger than our ordinance, or it's overall smaller than what we have today, more than our ordinance, but with an electronic message sign that, you know, complies, if that's the, the wish of the planet, that's what I was trying to get to, by separating out the electronic, because maybe members here don't want to have electronic at all, done, and if they do, make it comply, motion could handle that, but overall, I'm saying the overall square footage, I'm okay with, because it gives them at least some incentive to reduce the overall size of it, then handle these, so that was why I proposed the motion.
The sixty-eight square feet, though, includes the electronic message center.
Right, which is, what is it now, seventy-eight square foot, the overall sign?
Right, yes.
Twenty-some-odd feet?
Yeah. Did that fail for no support, or did you support it?
Yes.
No, it failed.
Okay, is there a, another motion to address A and B, Mr. Klooster?
Motion to deny variance A and variance B.
It's a motion by Mr. Klooster to deny A and B, is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Douglas, is there discussion?
I'll just...
Mayor.
I'll just add, I appreciate that, I just think that, you know, the result will be the existing sign, so I'm betting that, on my motion, that didn't get support, that that would be a better approach to get at least some, you know, reduction in the, the height, as well as the, the size, so I, in a purist sense, I would support this, but in a practical sense, I'm gonna vote no.
Any other discussion or comments? A motion is to deny A and B by Mr. Klooster, supported by Ms. Douglas, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nope.
No. I'll, I'll oppose also, even though it's not gonna matter.
So, three to two.
Mm-hmm.
Douglas, Vara, Klooster, voting to deny. Okay.
But just to be clear, the petitioners do have the option, now that we've waived off the other sign, it's unencumbered, they can propose a new sign that meets the square footage with an electronic, so...
And they don't have to come see us.
No.
Right.
Or a new sign that doesn't have electronic, that is the compliance size.
That you don't have to try to read, go fifty miles an hour.
Or keep the existing.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
Thank you for coming in, we understand.
Next sign variance, so this is item two, it is a request to install a wall sign for professional office building tenant Gongos at one fifty West Second Street.
Very briefly, this is in the downtown sign area three, the, the appeal is to allow two wall signs on the same facade, as you're probably familiar, the sign ordinance only allows one on each facade, they are proposing one at the north end of the existing office building, as highlighted in your, your drawings in your packet, there is an existing sign at the south end of the building, and so there are, would be, if you granted this, two wall signs, the square footage of the proposed sign is forty-five square feet, I believe the existing sign, if I can find it, is fifteen point six-six square feet, they're, they're under the maximum allowed sign square footage, in that both signs would total sixty point seven-seven square feet, and the maximum allowed would be a hundred square feet of all signage, so they're proposing a second sign on the west facade.
Any questions for Mr. Twing? Petitioner?
Jim Fields, Allied Signs, three-three-six-five Old Giftos Drive, Clinton Township, Michigan. We've installed a couple of the signs on this building as it is, and the visibility coming in on that west elevation to add a secondary sign, which would match the first, seemed very plausible, and will help identification, just because of the overall size and the stories of the building, as far as the square footage with a hundred square foot allowed, with the actual size of the building and the plot, blends in aesthetically, it's a pretty clean look, it's not highlighted, it's not facelit, it's very subtle, they're just trying to get more visibility coming in on the other side, again, it's, it stays, as, as Tim has pointed out, it stays under the actual square footage that would be allowed linear on that facade, it's just going for that second sign, so it's a multi-tenant location, it's a very large building, it's a very architectural building, and this would blend in, but also would help identifying from this causeway on there to where they can identify where Gongos is, because it can kind of get lost, which is nice, because you don't have the signs cluttering up the way the architecture is designed, so.
Thank you. Mayor?
Feels is kind of similar to what we did recently on Campbell Road with Ben Pro, and H R Pro, and something other Pro, no, multi-tenant.
Yeah, I do remember that, right.
Yeah, okay, makes sense.
Any questions for the petitioner? Is there motion?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move approval of the variance.
Support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster? Any discussion? Not seeing a, a mayor, sorry.
It looks nice, I mean, outside of our decision criteria here, it's tastefully done, and it looks nice, we've done this before, it makes sense, we want people not, I mean, I guess, and to some extent, we want people to get lost in our downtown, see all the amazing shops and everything, but, you know, Gongos is a great tenant we've attracted, and they do excellent work, and it'll be good to see a sign up there, so.
Yeah, that kind of building's really nice.
Any comments, anything else?
And again, different than the last one, which, again, with the electronic and such, I mean, we tend to want to approve the wayfinding signage, and this is within the square foot area and everything, even though it's two separate words, but it's just repetition, so it makes sense, yeah.
I agree. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, on item number three, this is a sign variance, a request to replace... Okay, item number three, this is a sign variance, a request to replace non-conforming wall sign for professional office building at nine forty-nine North Main Street.
The petitioner in this case recently replaced an existing wall sign on the north side of their building, along the Cantalpa Drive area, as depicted in photos in your report. The sign is twenty feet by six inch, twenty feet, six inches by ten feet, four inches, or with a sign area of two-hundred-and-eleven point eight three square feet. Sign area two does allow wall signs, but limits to a maximum no more than a hundred square feet. So, the first request is related to waiving one-hundred-and-eleven point eight three square feet. The second part of the appeal is, under the sign ordinance, wall signs have to have a placement of no less than eight feet above the public sidewalk. The bottom of the proposed sign, or the sign that's been installed, is two feet, five inches from the sidewalk. So, those are the two variances the petitioner is requesting from the planning commission.
Mr. Twing, any questions? Is the petitioner here?
I am not the petitioner. My name is Jack Kemp, I own signs by Tamar here in Oroluk.
Okay.
The petitioner is here, gentle Mrs. Leonard, who owns the building there with that.
Hello.
Leonard, you let? And I found out about this about two o'clock this afternoon. I thought this issue was done a year ago and everything, so I wanted to come down and support them, but I think this needs a little bit of history told with it. It was about a year ago, this time, we had a heavy storm and winds, and I got a call from Leonard, saying his sign had come off. And of course, I knew it, I've been driving through Oroluk for thirty years, and I figured it was just a little loose on the corners, and I said, let me drive out and put it up. We'd never met before, I didn't know, but the winds were bad, the storms were bad. So, as I got out there, thinking, you know, a couple screws, get it back on the wall, here is a sign hanging off, right, I mean, ready to go into Cantalpa. And I'm a decent-sized sign shop, I do not have the equipment to handle that. I have a subcontractor that I work with, and they are called Fortech Signs, and I got ahold of them and said, hey, we need to get a crane out here or something. In the meantime, with all this, the police came up, we had put yellow tape around and that, and they were adamant about, do something, get something, get something, get out. It really wasn't a danger, but I mean, I understand. The company that came out, the subcontractor, Fortech, called down to the city and said, here's our situation. What can we do? We know, you know, we... To pull it down, but basically, what it came down was, if we rebuild it, it's okay to put it back up. All is going on with the storm, the cop cars and everything, but we did get word from the city, and I don't know who we spoke to. Again, I, this is, I had left by then. But he said, basically, if you rebuild it, you can put it back up, it'll be okay. Bottom line, he called back again and said, for us to rebuild this, we're going to have to have four to five days, plus time to schedule it in, of sitting there, to come up with the things, or we could bring it down with a crane, put it up, and haul it back down to our place in Detroit. And that was what happened. So, this sign actually was pulled down, all right? And we were told there wouldn't be a problem with this if we rebuilt it, which we did, and prettied it up, I mean, you're going to do that, and put it back up on the wall. The framing and everything's there, yeah, some of the stuff's gone, there were some brackets of that were rusted, some of the weatherproofing on the side, I mean, we couldn't have it whole, but I mean, it was, it is the sign, it was fixed. So, then, I found out, I think, in March, there was a citation, and I said, no, go down, Leonard called me, I said, go down to the city and talk to them about it, and say, you know, this was just a sign that could be fixed, and redone. There wasn't a need for a permit, there wasn't a need for a variance, even with the grandfather clause. And was that in effect a year ago? The new ruling?
Yeah, there is no such thing under the sign ordinance as a grandfather clause.
When did that come into effect?
Two thousand and one.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Jesus, okay. Either which way, we put it back up. And then all this started tumbling down from here, until, and then I figured, I didn't hear anything for a while, I figured it was all resolved, all good. And then, sudden, today, I get a call, and it's like, you're coming down, I pulled up the minutes of the meeting, went, oh my God, you're kidding me. So, that's why I came down, to explain the situation of what this whole sign is about, and what was done. Yeah, you know, and I have pictures to show you, too, there was another advertiser up there. When this thing did blow down, and it was an act of God, a new advertiser came in, it is an income form, let's talk real here. We put that sign up, my subcontractor did all the building, he put it up, and then I applied the vinyl to it. So, that's kind of why I'm here, to really explain the whole story that Leonard and his son really weren't privy to through all that.
I'm planning on retiring, and the revenue generated by this sign is part of my consideration for my retirement.
And this has really just come about, and I found this out today. I knew there was revenue there, but I didn't know Leonard, at, you know, forty-eight years old, was going to retire soon, but...
Who?
Yeah. But it is a source of income, and it is almost identical to what was there a year ago, for the storm hammered it.
Ms. Beaky?
And excluding the graphics, they are different.
That's all that's changed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just to point out clarifications, a couple of things. So, number one, okay, so this, again, it's not a sign, it's an advertisement, it's a billboard on the side of the building, correct?
Right, right.
Which, again, I don't think our sign ordinance allows that in a neighborhood business zone, is it? Is a billboard allowed?
It's considered a wall sign.
It's considered regardless.
We don't look at...
What's on it, per se.
It's not it anymore.
It's been there for years.
I realize that, because I live around the corner from there, actually, and so I know about the other sign as well. But I was going to say, again, consistent with, I just made the comment on the last one, I mean, we're trying very hard to get consistent with our wayfinding signage and such, and to have all the signs in compliance when they are updated. So, basically, it's the size that's out of compliance, as you note in the notes here. And there isn't a grandfather clause, per se, for something like that, that's not, that doesn't exist. I just wanted to clarify. And the only business in the building is the Atlantic Service?
Yes.
They have the whole building, otherwise. But this sign has nothing to do with what's going on in the building, no.
Mayor?
Tim, can you clarify the impetus for the change? Is it the fact that there was an act of God that knocked down the sign that had to be repaired, or is it the fact that the content of the sign changed? So, the, in this case, the advertisement?
Well, I don't want to speak for the building department's determination as to what they called it, based on, but it's very similar to any of the signs that you've seen on Woodward, where they reface them, where they're putting something new in them, and they need a permit for it, or the building department recognizes it changed without the appropriate approvals. So, it has changed, the petitioner acknowledged it changed, and so they're simply saying that it's, because there is no non-conforming status for a wall sign or other signs under the sign ordinance, you either need to grant the variance, or they need to bring it into compliance.
So...
Because the purpose of not, the purpose of non-conformity is, when it goes away, it goes away.
It's about double the size, right now, what, so it's two-hundred-and-eleven square feet versus a hundred, which is a lot.
It's a little more than double.
So, the, if I can clarify this, too, because it's my understanding. The citation was issued, and of course, we're here on a variance...
Right.
Because of the graphics, not the sign itself?
It's the size.
No, you're here because the sign was changed without the appropriate approvals.
Okay, but we were given approval verbally, held or skeleter, I don't care how it was came about, but we were advised, go ahead and do it. There was two phone calls.
It's still a different sign.
I don't know who that was, or what that was.
I don't either. Again, it was a subcontractor, we got police wearing, we got this, we went down, there was an extremely large amount of money to rebuild and redo that. There's welding, I, and we went with the basic assumption, get it done, go ahead and rebuild it, and put it back up. I...
I have no idea who told you that, and neither do you, apparently.
I don't. And I tried to get ahold of Michael, and I don't know where he was today. I know he's not on vacation or anything, but I could not drag him down, see who it was. I mean, it could be anybody, it could have been Kevin, whoever in that department, I don't know who he contacted. But we worked on that assumption, or we would have left it there.
Well, you wouldn't have left it fallen down.
Well, we...
But regardless, it's still a, it's a different sign.
No, we are honorable business people, but I got to tell you, if we're not going to be able to put it back up, we would have negotiated with Leonard or the city to remove it and get it out of harms way.
Okay, sir, we're here this evening to make a decision with this body. I think the arguing back and forth is not productive.
Okay. But I want to get my point, we were advised.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I do. Is there any, are there any more questions for the petitioner? Is there a motion?
Motion to deny variances A and B.
There's been a motion by Mr. Klooster to deny A and B. Is there support?
I support.
Support by Ms. Beaky. Is there any discussion? Ms. Beaky and Ms. Douglas?
Now, the, I mean, the circumstances under which we can grant these variances specifically say that the alleged hardships and practical difficulties are both, which will result from a failure to grant the variance, include substantially more than mere inconvenience or monetary concern. And I, you know, my heart reaches out to you that you relying on this income, but our hands are tied in these circumstances. And I, I mean, this billboard has been part of the character of the community for the, for the, you know, twenty-five-plus years that I've lived here, and I'm around the corner from Ms. Beaky, and I see it all the time, and I feel bad, but I do have to support the motion.
Ms. Beaky?
No, I was just going to say that if it were possible to put one in compliance, again, when there are changes, it's important to look at what the ordinances are, and again, it's unfortunate, but it is very far out of compliance, and so that's why I support.
Any other discussion?
One of the things, and I understand, and I'm all for it, I heard Eric speak about the one on Woodward, keeping both in compliance, I kind of support that. In this case, looking at that, if we bring it down to a hundred square foot, correct, max, on that wall sign, and lift it up eight, there is going to be a very unattractive view there, and I don't know how we economically fix that. You've got a situation... I just have a couple of these, but this is what this wall looked like after that sign went down. So, we're going to put a hundred square foot, basically cut it in half.
Okay, sir, we have a motion on the table. Is there any other discussion on this motion? Okay, not seeing all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion to deny is approved, four to one. Thank you. Okay. We have item four. This is a notice of intent to update the master plan from the city of Berkeley.
Just informational, they're required to provide that notice, and we pass it along.
Okay. Before we adjourn, Mr. Goddick is not here, I want to thank him for his service to the planning commission. He's stepping down, he's leaving the commission, and I think he's been, he's served nine or ten years, I think.
Fourteen.
Fourteen years?
Maybe.
Twelve, at least.
Yeah.
Over ten years.
Over a decade.
So, we wish Dan the best, he's a great service to the community, he also serves on the traffic committee, we appreciate all of the time he's given, and we will have a new planning commissioner next month to replace him.
I'd just say, I had a chance to talk to Dan, unfortunately, he had a work obligation that he had to attend to tonight, an urgent issue that, you know, happens from time to time, all of us, you know, volunteer our time in the community and have professional obligations, and, you know, certainly, his mark on this community is going to be longstanding in a very, very positive way. I asked him if he'd come out the next planning meeting, so he could take his shots at me in all fairness, and I, joking around, because we all have the highest respect for Dan, and I think I learned a lot from him, sitting on this planning commission for, you know, the tenure that I've been on here, which is very limited compared to his experience. And Dan has done a tremendous amount on the traffic committee, planning commission, and Dan is a key figure in this community, that I think he'll take his experience and wisdom, and will find other opportunities, or he'll find other opportunities as well, to keep